We're in committee of the whole meeting, and I'd like to call this meeting to order, and I ask the clerk to call the roll.
Councilmember Francis. Councilmember Francis.
Here.
Councilmember Smiley.
Here.
Councilmember Marsh.
Here.
Councilmember Crabtree.
Here.
Councilmember Craig. Councilmember Martin.
Here.
Councilmember Wilcox.
Present.
Councilmember Meek.
Here.
Councilmember Lohmberger.
Here.
Councilmember Keel.
Here.
Councilmember Bell.
Here.
Councilmember Handy.
Present.
And we have everyone here, and we have a quorum.
Thank you. Everyone able, please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Moving along, we'll go to the approval of minutes. Everybody's got their minutes in their packet? Clear motion on that?
No motion.
Second.
Amy Craig and Jamie Lineenberger with the second. And we'll scroll right into administrative matters. Oh, I'm sorry, any discussion? Well, it's my first time. I knew I'd mess it up. Let's get it out of the way early. Any discussion on the minutes? All in favor?
Aye.
Now we'll go to administrative matters. So we'll go ahead and call on Chris Powell and Mandy Guffey to come up and discuss our recycling program.
Councilor, in front of you, your package, you should have the yearly report from 2022 to January 27th.
Any questions?
So how many new clients have we had in the last month?
Last month we had?
I think the number right now is somewhere around 1,050 total as far as the red recycling containers. We've picked up a couple of more commercial accounts.
I know you don't have it on here, but I think if you come back and do this again at another time or next year, it would be good to see the prior year, see where we were then versus where we are today. And just to see, just off the top of your head, I mean, are we looking at more, less?
We are more this last year than we were the prior two years. We got into COVID a couple of years ago, and everything kind of bottomed out. But we are on the invert. We are probably 300 or 400 tons more this year than we were prior COVID.
Wow, good job. And I have one question, Ms. Guffey. Have we gotten, I know you, we've got some marketing materials and some things. How's that going?
Yes, well, we, these beautiful days have gotten me itching to get these door hangers that are made possible by city council. So we are so appreciative of that. So we have 1,000 door hangers to get on those doors of anyone who doesn't have a red bin at the end of their driveway or that I can visibly see when I approach the house. So if anybody in the community loves to walk their neighborhood and they're out walking anyway, or I would be happy to join you and we can hit up the neighborhoods, that would be awesome. So that, that's, that's the next step of doing, and I've met with lots of different smaller organizations in the last two months in the new year. I presented to UHA upper and middle school yesterday, just kind of making a more grassroots effort of making connections with smaller groups, educating people on what can and can't be. Our social media, the last video we did reached, it's been viewed over 3,000 times and shared 56 times. So that's a, a big uptick. And so hopefully that information will help people know what can and cannot be, and what Chris is seeing at the facility that we, we don't want there. So he has seen a great increase and has done a fabulous job of keeping all that, that increase in line. So everybody's doing a good job, I think.
Well, thank you. Any other questions?
Not a question, more of a comment. So I was there for the wonderful presentation.
Oh, yes, you were.
I just want to commend Ms. Guffey, sorry, my microphone's off. I want to commend you for your efforts, and I will say in one day, one day, since that assembly yesterday, my recycling bin that never has anything in is full today. And so I think, I mean, those are the little things that I think we can make a difference, where it's literally full of soda cans today. And I feel like these students, they listened, and they realized that every person can make a difference. And so even though it does seem grassroots, which is obviously what we want, I really think that those are the kind of experiences that we're looking for. Yes, curbside recycling is awesome, but we can be recycling in our businesses and in our schools. And I saw evidence of that today, so I wanted to let you know.
Thank you so much for sharing that with me. And not to take up much time, but one of the things that I have also seen and heard, one of our newest participants in the curbside recycling is Trilogy. And when I met with them, one of the things that one of the residents shared with me was that recycling is, it's bigger than what we can see. It's bigger than a number. And it's, it's a way for, for someone who has taken from their community by being an addict and, and using those taxpayer resources and, and on and on and on. She said recycling is important to us because we are able to give back to our community, to do something positive for once. And so that is very heartwarming. So to me, just like, just like what you're saying with the kids listening, people are listening and people are trying to do the right thing. And when I say, I said before, I'll say it again, how proud I am of Hopkinsville. So thank you for sharing that with me, Ms. Craig.
Councilmember Francis.
Aye, aye. I would like some of your hangers to put in my neighborhood if you have any. I can come by and pick some up.
Absolutely. I have some in my car. I'll go get some.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you.
Anybody, anything else? All right. Thank you all very much. Moving along, call on Deputy Chief Powell for the quarterly fire department report.
Good evening. Chief Futral is not able to be here today, and his mother passed away yesterday, as most of y'all know, so please have his, him, his family in your thoughts and prayers. I know he is heartbroken and saddened at this time, so please keep him on, in the back of your mind. So a year-end report for the Hopkinsville Fire Department. We kind of broke it down into total fire incidents and total EMS run volume. Then it kind of tracks it over the past three years. Last year, we ended up with 3,313 fire runs and 11,281 EMS runs. So this kind of just indicates total run volume as far as fire and EMS combined. So last year, we looked at a combined run volume of 14,450 calls. And the graph just kind of trends over the past 10 years, kind of where we've been and how things have gotten busier. So reaching, we just kind of reached out to some other departments just to see if, see how they were doing in comparison to us. The, the two that we found that was more busy, more busier than we were, Louisville, Lexington, those two cities. So, but this is kind of how it breaks down. You have us, Covington, Frankfurt, all three of us are fire and EMS, so that is combined. Then it just kind of breaks it down into Owensboro, Bowling Green, Paducah, Henderson, and Madisonville. So it just kind of shows where, where we stand as a department as far as the call volume that we have and the responses that we, we take care of. Back on January 7th, we had our gala. It's just a award ceremony. We partnered with our Hopkinsville Fire Department Fire Association, and we were able to have an award ceremony for, for all of our employees. And during that, during that gala, we actually presented some awards that were voted on by all of our department. Everyone was sent a link and was able to vote. And if you take a look at the top one, Officer, Officer of the Year was Captain Martin Bangard. Our Rookie of the Year, which is somebody that was less than one year, Lance Travathan. Advanced EMT of the Year was Christopher Barton. Our Engineer, we got, one of the people that drives the, the fire engines, Brandon Peck. Our, we, we started with a medical provider, so this is nothing but, this is an EMS employee. It is not a dual role employee. This is geared just towards EM, and it was Ms. Caitlin Peak. Our EMT of the Year was Stephen Ferguson. Our Firefighter of the Year was Brandon Isabel. And our Medic of the Year was Cliff Hoy. So a little bit of department training throughout the year. We do a lot of in-house training. We, we have that capability. We have the company officers. We are also required by Kentucky Fire Commission to at least have 100 hours a year of continuing education and fire training hours. Usually we go over, I mean, our company officers, our lieutenants at the stations, they're, they're doing a lot with, with the employees. But we completed over 1,200 different styles of classes. That could be anywhere from fire behavior to rescue to EMS to anything. A total, a grand total of 10,512 hours went to all of our employees. 1,800, a little over 1,800 instructor hours, because we do so much in-house as far as instructing. We have our own instructors, so we kind of tallied up a lot of instructor hours just to show that we're teaching and, and getting everyone prepared. And something we've kind of started in-house, IF SAC Fire Officer 1 and 2 class. What this is, is just an accredited class. So we can go to State Fire School, we can go to some other type of schools, and we can get this exact same class. But we have the capability and the facility now to start teaching these in-house. And that way, we don't have to send anybody off. We can get more bang for, more people involved, and it's, and do it right here. Nobody has to travel. So, but trying to move our officers a little closer to where they need to be, give them a little more information, and, and proceed on. So right here, just indicates some of our response times. The top one is just dispatched to, from the time of call. We get dispatched to scene arrival. Then the bottom section is just where the, we get dispatched and how long it takes us to get in route. So are there any questions?
Do have a question for you, and I look at your total run volume as compared to the other communities, which some of those are quite larger than what we are. And yet our total run volume is pretty doggone high. My question would be, do you have enough EMF qualified individuals to meet the need of a total run volume? And if not, what can we do to help you mitigate that factor?
Well, if you, if you go back to the feasibility study that was presented, that was a recommendation by them to add another ambulance. Right now, currently, we run five, and according to feasibility study, they recommended six.
I just had a question along the same lines. So when you look at Hopkinsville versus Bowling Green, which we all know Bowling Green's about, you know, quite a bit larger than us.
Yes, sir.
And we're running twice the runs. Do you have any feedback on why that is?
Okay, you, you take a look at Owensboro, Bowling Green, Paducah, Henderson, Madisonville. They are nothing but fire. They are not EMS, so, so therefore that, that's what bumps us up compared to them.
Okay, so just, just off of that then, so you're looking at Frankfurt versus Hopkinsville?
Yes, sir.
They get fire and EMS, and they're still, we're still running 4,000 more runs a year. Do you have any idea why that is?
Just, just the population, the, the need from the population.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
So I, I have a question, and maybe this will explain it, but the difference. What percentage of the EMS runs are for dialysis, doctor's appointments, x-rays? I mean, I, I see you all out in the community making those runs a lot. So what percentage are the number, if you know?
I'm kind of shooting from the hip a little bit, trying to remember on the last ambulance board numbers that, that I had to put together. But we're right around 190 to 200 runs per month as far as hospital, hospital transfers and the convalescent side. So it kind of, it kind of fluctuates around that 200 mark per month.
Oh, 1,000 to 15, 1,500 a year.
Yes, sir.
Of the ambulance runs or for those purposes and not necessarily the emergency type run?
Correct. Sometimes it goes, goes above 200 and, and so, yes.
Any other questions? Thank you, Deputy Chief Powell.
Absolutely.
All right, we'll move on to the monthly and agency board council appointee reports. Just real quick on that, after some discussion with, with the mayor and myself, and I think Mr. Body was involved in that, instead of going to our, just our quarterly kind of free for all, you know, if you've got something, throw it out there. What we kind of decided to do, just do a little trial run this year, is to give each ward a month, so we're going to rotate it through. Since obviously it's February, we're going to start with wards one and two, so Councilmember Francis can, can catch up. So Councilmember Marsh, just be on, on the alert. You're going to be on the hot seat next month and so on. And Mr. Handy on the end, if you keep up, we a lot of times don't have a, a meeting in December. We'll move you to November. No worries. We'll, we'll take good care of you. So all that being said, I'm going to call on Councilmember Francis. Have you got anything to report?
No, none of my boards have met yet as of February. So no, they haven't. I haven't anything to report. Thank you.
Well, and if something changes on that, just give us a holler. We'll slide you in somewhere.
No problem.
All right. Councilmember Smiley.
I'm the same way. We have not had any meetings on the, any of the boards that I'm, or committees that I'm on.
Well, easy enough.
Easy this time.
So we're gonna, we're gonna slide on through there, and if we don't have anything there, we'll go with no unfinished business. So we will move right on to new business. And I see Ms. Clayton is already at the podium, so without any further ado, let's see what we got from you.
All right, so the first item on our agenda for me to talk about is our operational budget. I'm going to hit some highlights from the operational budget, and then if you guys have questions, you can ask me. But the biggest source of revenue we're going to use for this operational budget amendment is our interest revenue. Interest revenue has increased a lot due to the fact that interest rates are going up. So we have a lot more interest revenue than what we had planned last year about this time when we start planning the budget. So we're going to use our extra interest revenue to pay for the things in the operational, the expense side. So I'm going to highlight three of them. Number one is the 400,000. I know that we didn't talk about when we did the emergency thing, where the money was going to come from. But this 400,000 called a revitalization fund is going to be used for these buildings right over here that we had the emergency meeting about. Also, we need 73,000 to transfer into WINS, and that's because the price of concrete has increased since we did the WINS sidewalk plan. We have a few sidewalks left to finish in WINS, and they should be finished up this year. But we need additional money in that fund in order to finish the commitments we made with the WINS project. And the last one I want to highlight is the Ascend Elements Bond. We borrowed some money last year to buy the ground for Ascend Elements, and the bond payment is due March 1st. It's an interest-only payment, and we did not budget for that, so we need to move money into that account to pay for that bond. And then the rest are just some smaller items, but if you have questions about those, I'd, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions? Anybody want to make a motion for the council?
No move.
Second.
So Councilmember Smiley and Councilmember Craig, all in favor?
Aye.
All right.
You got to say any opposed.
Any opposed? Well, everybody said, okay, thank you. I'm learning. We're going to get through this. So, well, I see your names on the next one, so we'll slide them to item B.
We have a capital budget amendment, which you have a memo in your packet. It's on page 11, related to a capital fund amendment that we need. It's from CDS. We need $6,637 to be moved into a line item to cover the renovations. We'll be using prior year capital revenue in order to pay for the $6,000. So that's, that's all that will be in that capital budget amendment. So do you have any questions for me about that?
Want to make a motion?
Motion.
We'll, we'll, we'll go, we'll go, Councilmember Martin, and we'll give a second. Councilmember Francis, and all in favor?
Wait a second. We're going to have discussion first.
Questions?
So I'm, I'm assuming that we thought the project was finished, and then we find windows. Is that what happened?
Well, we have actually had two projects we've run out of the capital fund for the renovations over there, and they thought that the funds from one capital fund would be saved. But it was two years old, and after two years, if you don't spend capital money, it goes back into the reserve. So it was not available for them to spend. So it was just probably a miscommunication or...
So really an administrative...
Yes. We thought the money was, they thought the money was there and it wasn't. And so we need, we need to be able to put some money back in that line item for them.
Thank you. There you go, sir.
Thank you, sir. Okay, any more questions? Sure, we're asking now. We got a motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Got it. So now, well, you're on the list a lot tonight. We'll go on then to C.
It's me again. Okay, so we're asking to amend the, the way our alcohol beverage control administration is done. Right now, we have one ABC officer, and that is Robert Martin. And when he is out, no one is allowed, like, it has to be registered with the state, and no one's allowed to get on the, the website and push alcohol licenses through. There's a whole long process of what happens if you want to sell alcohol in the city, and it starts at the state level, and then we have to approve it. And anyway, when, when the ABC officer is out, we need a deputy officer. And that's what we're asking for, is a deputy officer to be added to the ordinance in order to approve people who want to get alcohol licenses when our officer is out. So that's what this is about, and I'll be happy to answer questions. I probably didn't explain that very well, but that's what we're asking for.
Asking to increase?
We are. So the salary for the ABC officer was set at $150, I think, when the ordinance was originally written over 50 years ago. And so we're asking to increase the salary from $150 to $200 a month. And then we want to pay the, the deputy officer a salary as well. I think it's in there at 50, but I, I think we actually had talked about having it at 100. So we would like to set it at 100. That person is going to have to learn all the rules and regulations about what's required when people want to sell alcohol in the city. So it's going to require some work on their part. So we, we really would like to compensate them by paying them $100 a month for being the deputy officer.
So I have a quick question. Is this deputy officer going to work the 12 months out of the year and, and actually support the ABC officer?
Yes.
Or are they only going to fill in when that officer cannot?
They will both work, and whichever one is available will both have access to the website to approve applications. So if one is out, the other one will do it. It just gives us two people that can approve those applications instead of having one. But they'll both be working year round.
I see. Yeah, so.
Do we need to make a change to this item right here?
No, I think just whichever, you, you've got one ordinance in your, in your packet, and another is on your table. Whichever one you want to make the motion for, either the 50 or the 100, can be in the motion.
I have, I have a question. It may be weird, but there is a, a word. It's not spelled wrong, but it's the wrong word.
Okay.
Because in my day job, I wordsmith all the time. I have severed as the city's ABC administrator.
Okay.
Should be, I have served. I don't know if that affects the document, but I noticed that word.
Okay.
That was my only comment. Sorry.
Can we claim that up on the actual order?
It's in Robert's memo, I think. It's not as part of the ordinance.
That won't affect the order.
Okay.
So.
I'll make a motion that we approve, I mean, we've got two ordinances here. So my motion is that we approve the, the ordinance in the packet where the secondary deputy would receive $100 a month. That's my motion.
I would second that.
Not to confuse this, but my, my paper says, my second one says $50 for the deputy.
Yes, you have one of each. We have two choices.
You got the one in your packet, and you got the one in front of us. There was little...
Both of mine say 50.
Uh-oh. One in the packet should say 100.
Kind of like getting the program with the star on it.
Does yours say 50?
I got two in my packet. Okay, I got.
No, on the actual ordinance, not in the letter.
So the motion set forth that we do the $100.
That's my motion.
For the deputy. That's what, that's what we're voting on. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Why do you look at me?
I'm looking, I'm looking at Amy. I'm looking at Amy.
He's looking at me because I told him he has to say any opposed. He's looking at me.
I'm, I'm looking at Amy. I'm, I'm sorry that I, I...
It's, it's fitting, but go ahead.
You throw it to rock.
He's trying to show me that he's...
So moving on to item D, the economic development transfer. Not even a call on you this time. You're already there.
All right, this is my last item for you guys tonight, okay? We have, we, well, you have my memo in front of you. We need to pay some bills for the design of the rail spur related to Ascend Elements, and we have not been approved still as of the last time I talked to Amy Brog, which was last week, for the DRA grant. We are still awaiting approval for the DRA grant that is supposed to pay for the rail spur to be installed for Ascend Elements. So we need to pay the design, and we're asking to pay it out of the Economic Development Fund. And that will require an MO by council. I don't think I typed up the MO yet. I did not. Um, I did not. Um, that will require an MO by council to, um, use the economic development funds to pay for the rail spur design.
How much is it?
You know how much?
Okay, the rail, it's, um, $61,200? Yeah, $61,200, um, for the design of the rail. That's the total, that's not the amount we need to pay right now. I think the first invoice was $1,600, and then we got one today, that's $8,000. So, we have about $10,000 to pay right now, I think.
So, the, the MO that you would present to the council would be in that amount?
Yeah, it would be for the full $61,000.
Which would be reimbursed when the...
That was my question.
Grant comes, yeah?
Um, no, probably not. Um, we are probably not gonna be able to be reimbursed for it because the grant requires that no work be completed before the grant award date. So, we are going to pay for the design.
Councilman Crabtree.
So, we're getting bills one at a time?
Month by month, so they're billing us each month.
So... Would it make sense to approve a lot less than $61,000? Say maybe five or 10? And then hold there until we needed more money in hopes that the grant's gonna come in?
I, I think the grant is still not going to pay for the design. I could be wrong. Um, if you want to approve an amount that's less than that, that would be fine with me. I mean, however you guys want to do it. But I think that until we get a notice to proceed, we are not supposed to do any work or have any work done. And we've already contracted with them to have this work done. So, I think we are going to be on the hook for paying for the design of the rail spur, but nothing else. Where it is being designed, and we've contracted with them.
So, is there a way we can confirm that if we were to get the money tomorrow, that, that wouldn't apply?
I'm gonna refer to Doug. I'm pretty sure the grant will be specific that unless we had a notice to proceed, they're not going to pay. We cannot write a check to ourself. We can't reimburse ourself. So, if we've had to pay for it, I think we're stuck with it.
That, that'll be in the grant agreement, which we don't have yet. But we'll, we'll look at that, and of course, anything that we can recover and get reimbursed for, you can be assured we won't proceed.
So, what I'm trying to do, if, if anybody's got any questions, is instead of us paying it out of our general fund, because it really wasn't budgeted for...
It's not coming out of our general fund.
We're asking to pay for it out of the economic development fund.
Whatever, it's coming out of city funds. I, I would be in favor of making it, say, $10,000 and holding it there until we get bills above that, and then we can do a little more. Cause I'm hoping that we could dump that in there. I don't know.
And that's okay with me if that's what you want to do. That's, that's what I have right now to pay, which means I'll be back again in March asking for more money to pay the next month when we get the bill, but...
I make a motion that we make it $10,000 for now and leave it at that. And then if we need more, we can always come back and do more instead of a straight-up $61,000.
Any second?
Second.
We've got a motion, a second. I have a question. So, since we have already started the design phase, we're stuck. The question I have is, it doesn't matter if we move $10,000 or $60,000. Since we have already started that work, we are on the hook for that as it looks right now.
I do not know the answer to that question until I have the grant agreement.
Okay, we're on the hook for the expense. The question is, are, will we be able to defer any of that expense for the grant proceeds? And we don't know at this point.
I, I don't know the answer.
So, from a... From a standpoint of, of you not having to come back every single month, we could move the amount, the total amount out. But then if we can use part of the grant when it comes in, we can always put it back.
Absolutely.
Cause I think that would be for your office and for our folks having to... I know Mr. Perry in the back is probably dealing with this a lot, is probably not gonna wanna... Cause you gotta keep in mind, it takes from the time they get, say, they get a bill today, they can't include it on today's meeting, so then they're a month behind the committee of the whole, and then another two weeks. And I'm betting if most creditors, you know, you get 45, you're, you're looking around 45 days at that point. I, I mean, I would just like to make it easier for our staff to pay the bills. If there's money left, we can move it back into Economic Development Fund. That's the whole reason we set up the Economic Development Fund, was to, for these kinda issues. I mean, that's where I'm at.
Could I ask an additional question, kinda leveraging off of that? I'm, I'm assuming that the architects or designers, civil engineers, whoever submitted some kinda schedule of values, that they anticipated payment in a certain way?
I'll defer to Mike Perry.
Yes, sir. There is a schedule, and, uh, of course, they're about 80% complete with the design work, and they're only about two weeks out to be, having it completed. Uh, so, when they actually have it completed, then they'll be wanting their full amount of money for that design work.
So, it's that close?
It's that close, yes.
Okay, let's make this simple. I withdraw my motion, and we'll move on.
Uh, Councilmember Craig, you had your hand up.
Um, I was wondering if we, I mean, cause I do, I do see what Chuck is saying. I, I'm wondering if we can word the, the ordinance to say up to a certain amount. I, I don't know, but I mean, part of me is thinking, if it's that close, we should probably just...
Yes, we can word the ordinance to say up to $61,200.
Well, I'm just thinking up to that amount, just so that way you don't have to keep coming back, going back to what Steve is saying. I think that's way too much hassle to keep asking for money. But if we said up to a certain amount, then it's, it's there if needed, if that makes sense.
It does.
When, Councilmember Francis?
Can you refresh my memory? Um, when did we put in for the grant?
Hmm.
That's a good question.
She said it's a good question. I mean, you don't have to give me exact date?
It, it was October, November, I think, when we finally got everything together.
October, okay. That's, I was looking for the month. Thank you.
Of 2022?
2022.
Okay, gotcha.
But they don't give us any kinda timeline or anything, do they?
When I, when I spoke to Amy, um, last week, um, Amy Froge at PADD, she's the one who actually applied for the grant for us. Um, she said that they needed a signature from someone, and they were waiting on that at the present time. So, I am not exactly sure. Um, I can touch base with her, and I'll be glad to email you guys whatever her update is. I told her to expect an email from me every two weeks until we hear something. So, I've been staying on it, trying to keep up with, are we gonna get this money or not? Um, we have been told by, um, Mr. Hendricks that if we didn't get the DRA grant, that the state was still gonna pay for the rail spur, that we're not gonna have to pay for it. So, it's just the design of it that we went ahead and, and went through the process and got bids, and, you know, we've committed to this now, so...
Yeah, well, you know, my questions, my questions were not to defer because even though I, I say "we," I'm talking about all of us. But I mean, the, the, some of the people around this desk were not actually responsible for encumbering the city for that work to be done. But I mean, we gotta pay our bills, don't we?
That's it.
So, yeah, so the bottom line is, I think, I wish we could have some way to follow that schedule of values and not, you know, yeah.
Any other questions on this? So, the motion, uh, Councilman Crabtree's withdrawn his motion. So, the motion we're voting on would be...
We haven't made a motion.
We hadn't made a motion, so...
I'll make a motion.
Well, I thought, actually, I thought, there's been so many...
There, no, I, we need a new motion, basically, that we, we are, we are making a motion that we will go up to the $61,200 or whatever that total amount is.
Second.
Councilmember Craig, and Councilmember Meeks with the second. Any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Ms. Clayton. Call on, uh, Tom Britton, come up. We're gonna talk about the LNN property transfer.
Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we do a continuance on this item until the March Committee of the Whole meeting.
Got a motion for moving this to March? Anybody a second?
Second.
Second, I think, Miss Craig was first. Any discussion? Did you say? Any discussion from anybody at the table?
We have question, quick question. We have, is this where the grant or the $400,000, this, this is not this. I would...
No.
Okay, I'm sorry. Withdraw my comment.
This is the prop, the, like, what, what happened was the LNN Depot property was transferred, and this is talking about transferring it back, correct?
Yeah, gotcha, thank you.
I think Mayor Knight would like to speak on this.
Yes, I would like to speak on this. I want to bring it back to the city from the land bank and not wait on it. I've asked Mr. Britton to have it ready to come back to the city to, on this for the simple reason we, as a city, have to get ahold of this and get it took care of. We have to be able to give the people of Hopkinsville a breakdown exactly how much money we're gonna spend. We get calls daily on it, and that is fine. I will give everyone's phone number out from the council so y'all can talk to these people too, daily on it. Because this is our problem. Land Bank has not done anything with it. Former mayor and council kicked it to the curb, like we have other things. We're not kicking this to the curb. So, either we can kick it to next month, and it will be right back here again next month for us to discuss. But... Don't be upset when things come up, when people start calling you about this. Because we, as a council and a mayor, are responsible for this, and we need to move forward. Just because someone thinks they have something that they wanna do with it, that's great. We do not have viable numbers telling us it's gonna be 3 million, 5 million, whatever. I've contacted architects, I have structural engineering report coming to me. I will have any time this week, and we have an architect looking at it too. So, we know exactly where we are at as council members and the mayor so we can give a positive answer to our community of why we need to be given an answer to it. Not to say, let's wait another month. We've had over four years that the, that they moved back to the Alhambra, the Arts Council did, and we haven't done anything. So, let's kick it another month? I don't think we need to. Thank you.
Question, uh, so, we, we've not actually received the structural or architectural analysis back yet?
We will have that this week.
Okay, I got you.
So, so apart, apart from all the other extraneous things we could talk about, we're just talking about the transfer of the funds to put it in our court?
Exactly.
And so, it isn't gonna, if we, it's our responsibility.
Exactly.
So, there's no need to put it off regardless of whether some pie in the sky is gonna drop and pay extra money for this or not.
Exactly.
So, I make a motion, we move with this.
Well, we've got, we've got, we've got, we've got a motion on the floor from, uh, Councilmember Smiley to, to, uh, push it to March. You know, I'm, I'm gonna say from, you know, just having discussion that, you know, this is one I see, I see a lot of sides on. This one, there's, there's funds attached to it, you know, I, I... I don't know where we're, I, I know there, there is some, some talk of some, some folks coming up with some plans.
Right.
That, you know, it's kinda, it's kinda like this. I'm hearing from one side, we got some plans. I'm hearing from the other side, we're getting some, uh, you know, we're getting reports and everything. We, we don't really have anything at all from, from anybody. So, you know, we're, you know... Well, I think what I'd like to do on this, if we're gonna vote on the motion to move it to March, I think I'd like to call a roll call vote on, on that.
I have a question before we go to the coffee. You, you brought up the motion, Bruce, and of course, the mayor's giving his two cents. What's the difference between doing it now and doing it a month from now? And I'm, I'm really asking both of you to see...
What, what, I've had some discussions with, um, some different ones. And my point is, you know, it took 30 years for this to happen, and we can't, we can't fix it in two months. I mean, it's not, that's not gonna happen. Um, but I have, um, had discussions with different ones. Um, there is a group that, uh, would like to just wait for one month, give them one month to, uh, see if they can get together their, their proposal. At that point in time, we might not have to come back to the city. I mean, we, I don't know that. Um, but I just feel like that we can wait a month. The, the community, um, we're working on it, we're trying to move forward on it. We are doing the assessments on the building. It'll probably be, um, that, before we get all the true figures and all, it's probably gonna be close to the, uh, the next meeting before we even get those, those hard figures is what they think it's gonna cost. So, that, that's my, my thought on it, that we just not rush into it, give it just a little time, and, uh, and, and see what, where, where we're at, not only us, but also, um, this interested group.
I have a question now.
On the fireway.
So, so from the city's perspective, one month, what, what will, one month continuance, what will that do for your decision-making process?
Decision-making process, one month? That'll be up to y'all. Where it boils down to is I want the $137,000 back from CDS for one thing. I don't think it costs $500 to put two pieces of plywood on a door. I wanna see all their receipts and stuff like that, from where we spent the other $9,000 for bell engineering and all the other receipts that are on this building. I want to know exactly where we're spending this money. I'm tired of spending money that we are not seeing. This building is our problem. You know, Land Bank's had it, nothing against that fine group of people, but I feel like it is the city's decision to take care of our problem cause we're the ones getting the calls on it. If they want to start calling CDS and the Land Bank Board, let's start calling them then. That's where we're at. I think we need to, as a group, bring it back to the city and move forward with it and get us a true hard figure of where we're gonna be spending our money and what it's gonna cost to repair it. That way, we can give it to whoever, the investment group that's wanting to buy, or where we are at as a council, cause we're coming on, up on budget, where we're gonna come up with this money, how we're gonna fix this building.
So...
So, still, one month, though, will that change our decision-making process? Or we, can you still make the same decisions next month that we made this month?
Y'all can make decisions, whatever you want. It's up to y'all, twill.
I don't know the details behind the, uh, the plan from the mayor's office, though.
So, I do, I do have a question, Mr. Mayor. Um, the city have, is the ci, we're waiting for the final report from the engineer from, for the LNN Depot.
Yes, ma'am.
So, we have paid for that, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
So, and we're going to get that sometime this week within...
Oh, I'll, I'll have it tomorrow.
Okay, so...
I've been calling them and asking where it was at, cause I wanted to know why we hadn't seen it.
I hear ya. I would do the same thing. So, we get that, and then we look at that, and then we could presumably, that could be given to whoever is interested in the LNN Depot?
Whoever's interested in it, but also, me and Mr. Smiley met with an architect yesterday trying to figure out how much exactly what this is gonna cost to fix, so we can give this figure to you too.
Right, so that whole process could be sped up, so you wouldn't have to wait the 30 days.
Right, I'm trying right now to get it back in our hands so we can give it to y'all to start studying. Instead of, well, we gotta wait till we get it back, and then we start looking at it. I wanna get it back in our house so we can move...
So, we have access to records and everything? Okay, I understand. Thank you.
So, the question, the question really comes down to, does it really matter whose hand it's in, whether it's the corporation or the cities?
I don't think it does, right?
I don't think it does.
We can still look at those numbers.
Whether somebody comes in...
Who owns, who holds title? We can still look at the data.
I, I've actually got a question for Mr. Britton. The, uh, when I, when I look over the, the letter from, I guess, LDC, and there was $9,600 spent. Now, you and I have discussed that. Uh, full disclosure, I emailed and asked that question. The response I got was $500 for boarding up windows, which, you know, okay. And $9,100 to bell engineering. However, you have only paid invoices or been invoiced on $3,640. So, is that still correct?
That is not. We received additional invoice after we spoke for an additional $3,000 or $4,000.
So, do we, do we have an actual amount that we're up to on that $9,600?
Yes, sir. The, the contract that we have, or LDC has with Bell, is for $9,100 that provided the cost estimates that we were provided back in January. The cost estimates we were provided were approximately $1.2 million to stabilize the building, $2 million-plus dollars to convert it to a usable type of space. That's where the $9,100 was committed to. That was through Bell and Haffer. Just point of clarification, CDS has a... Just point of clarification, CDS hasn't been provided any funds by the council as part of this project. The local development corporation has, which we do have residual funds, and as part of the LDC's offer of property back to you based on the mayor's request, there is, I believe, a hundred and, let me put my face real quick.
I've got one forty-seven.
There is a hundred and forty-seven thousand, two hundred and forty-four dollars and thirty-eight cent remaining out of that. The only monies that have been spent is ninety-six hundred dollars, nothing else. Five hundred dollars for the windows, ninety-one hundred dollars committed for engineering study.
So you committed the ninety-one hundred, they're invoicing it for whatever reason in stages. So if we were to take this property back before the entire ninety-one hundred has been spent, could we not bring back the difference minus what has not been invoiced? Any invoices come in, the city can take care of that through that fund?
Okay, well, the contract is through Bell, CDS, LDC. I mean, the motion of the LDC was to transfer it back and to return all uncommitted monies, which the only thing that has been committed and/or spent is the ninety-six hundred dollars.
I think that would be appropriate if the contract has already been signed between LDC and Bell, then that would be appropriate to retain that to cover that.
We have, there is a commitment hanging out there, yes.
Do you anticipate any other expenses in the next month?
No, sir. Basically, our activity with this building, when the mayor indicated that the city wanted to take it back, I mean, we have stopped. Obviously, if a window gets broken, we're gonna patch that up, but there is no immediate plans to do any additional work with the depot.
Any additional questions? Okay, Councilmember Francis?
Do you have any electricity on?
Say again.
Electricity?
I believe so.
There is?
Well, there's not, no. Well, I, okay, when I was out there, the alarm system was working, so I assumed it was, but.
So it has a bill?
There is electricity.
Who pays that electric bill?
The city.
So the city's paying the utilities on?
The city was paying utilities. We were notified first part of January, I believe, that that utility bill would be transferred to the LDC.
We didn't transfer it yet, though.
Okay, 'cause we don't need to be paying utilities on stuff we don't know. We really don't need to be paying utilities on things we don't know.
Right. We contacted the utility company, and they said that LDC needed to sign a form and all of that after we found out what we needed to do. It was decided we were gonna take it back, so we decided not to transfer it, to transfer it back. So, yes, we're paying for the utilities.
'Cause I've got a house on South Main if we're gonna do that.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
So, Councilmember Smiley?
One other thing. I don't want people to think that I'm trying to push this kick-it-ball down the road, as they say. We do have the architect that just came in that's gonna get back with us on some cost estimates and ideas of what they think, whether it's, you know, we can do this, or it's gonna cost this many dollars. You can do the different ways that we might be able to approach the problem with the building. And it's gonna take a little while for them to get back with this on that part of the cost factor. And so, again, you know, if we just wait a month, we'll have more of those figures that we can make a decision exactly how it's to proceed.
I just can't figure out why it would make a difference whether that group works with the local development corporation, or they work with the city. How would that make a difference?
If this comes back in the city, will that be managed by who? Is that gonna be Mr. Perry in the back? Who's gonna manage this building?
Mr. Perry will be handling that.
So it's gonna go to our public works? So any involvement, if another group was to get involved, it would go through probably public works and through the finance office?
Yes.
For anything else? That's who it would be, they would be dealing with, would be finance and public works. Is that correct?
Correct.
So it's either, well, so basically, what we're deciding is then, are we gonna deal with public works and finance, or are we gonna deal with the LDC? Does that sound?
Well, really, we've got a motion whether or not we're gonna wait. We're gonna wait a month or not.
So, that's what I'm saying. So that's kinda what the motion's out there. Lot of discussion.
Was it, could I ask a technical question? Maybe it's a point of order. Was that actually a motion to table?
The motion was to move it to March.
I got you.
To the March Committee of the Hall. So with the amount of discussion we've had, I think we'd like to do a roll call vote. Some that I did discuss with Mr. Willen. We do roll call votes, you know, every now and then in Committee of the Hall, and we talked about rotating those just a mirror like we do council, so it's not going the same way every time. So we're gonna, I guess if we're gonna do that, I'm gonna ask the clerk to call the roll on the vote, and we'll start with.
Do you wanna clarify the motion?
I think we need a clarification.
Okay, the motion, the motion, I thought it was, okay.
Well, you gotta explain what's yes and what's no, basically.
If you vote yes, you are moving it to March. If you vote no, you are, we're gonna vote on it tonight. Again, we'll have another vote right after this one.
Right.
Right.
So we'll start with Ward Two on the roll call vote. Well, I guess we're just gonna have to start here and go back. You'll figure it out. It's not. Okay.
We'll go in order tonight before.
Do a curve ball.
Do a curve ball. She wasn't expecting that. I apologize. I thought we had discussed that. I'm sorry.
That's okay. Councilmember Francis?
Repeat what you said. If you vote yes, what?
Yes, if you vote yes, we're moving it.
To March.
To March. If you vote no, we're gonna vote on it tonight.
Okay. Yes, to March.
Councilmember Smiley?
Yes.
Councilmember Marsh?
Yes.
Councilmember Crabtree?
No.
Councilmember Craig?
Yes.
Councilmember Martin?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilcox?
Yes.
Councilmember Meek?
No.
Councilmember Landberger?
No.
Councilmember Keel?
No.
Councilmember Bell?
No.
Councilmember Handy? So it passes that it's gonna be moved to March.
So we will add that to the March agenda, I suppose. All right, so, Mr. Britton, now you can get up here and do yet another presentation for the former senior center.
Yes, sir. This second piece of property is 409 East Seventh Street. As you just stated, it was a former senior citizen center, Penarol Child Abbot's Center. This property was transferred to LDC by the city back several years ago. The property has been empty for a few years now. There is no immediate plans for use. The mayor has indicated a desire for the city to take this property back. We took that to the LDC board, and they voted unanimously to offer this property back to the city of Hopkinsville.
Where's it at? One more time.
This is on Seventh Street. It's between, I believe, Clay and the railroad track, and I've got a slide here.
Across from where the old Napa building was. Remember where that was?
Oh, okay.
Yeah. Sorry, I have a question. Okay. We had a lot of questions on the last one. Am I good on this one? All right, so anybody wanna entertain a motion?
Make the motion.
Second.
Smiling. All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, that one goes.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Now we're gonna move on to the Pardue Lane park renaming. We'll call on Andrew Wilson. Send you back there, Andrew. Ain't government fun? It's your turn.
Councilman Keel, you said twenty minutes, right?
Two.
Two, two, all right.
You get your shameless plug right here.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. All right, I'm Andrew Wilson. I'm president of the Rotary Club of Hopkinsville. It is my pleasure to present this to you today. Rotary Club of Hopkinsville's been around for a hundred and three years, and we are on our seventy-third auction. Our goal in history is to help Christian County in youth and education. Occasionally, we're presented an opportunity, and it's my pleasure to present this opportunity to y'all. I believe y'all know about the inclusive playground that will be going into the park at Pardue Lane. The Rotary Board has approved donating one hundred thousand dollars towards that all-inclusive playground. In exchange, we will, I don't even know that the park has a name, but we will name the park Rotary Park at Pardue Lane. Any questions?
Rotary?
Rotary.
Rotary.
Okay, thank you.
So.
Do we need a motion to?
Actually, I think what we need here, and Mr. Willen, you correct me if I'm wrong, we will need a motion to forward on an MO to officially name the park Rotary Park at Pardue Lane pending a hundred thousand dollar check.
As long as that check clears.
As long as, and we're not, and we're not ordering signs until it clears the bank.
Yeah.
The lady next to you, she'll be sure that check clears, so.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Second.
I've got Councilmember Craig, Councilmember Martin.
And thank you, yay.
All in favor of accepting a hundred thousand dollars from Rotary?
Absolutely.
Aye. Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you, Mr. Wilson. And when we had the conversation, I do wanna tell you, Andrew did say, hey, how many times do you have somebody trying to give money to the city? And I asked him willingly. So are they willingly giving?
Doesn't happen often.
Not often. That's exciting. Thank you.
Thank y'all very much. Shameless plug, seventy-third annual Rotary Auction, April seventeenth through twenty-second.
Be sure you talk it into the mic. You only get one chance. Thank you, Andrew. Well, great. I don't see Mr. Brockman in the room. So the Tiebreaker Park Family Aquatic Center renaming, and we knew Tab was gonna be running late. Me and Mike Perry flipped a coin over this. I lost, so I'm holding the bullet points for what we're gonna talk about on this. So just in case I don't get to Committee of the Hall in time, and I'm sure if we, look out the window, be sure he's not in the parking lot laughing.
He just texted, he's on the way.
Well, that's good.
You can do it.
Well, we can, I'll tell you what. Can we get a motion to move H behind J?
Yeah, I'll make that motion.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilmember Craig, second by Smiley. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Moving along.
Move that down.
Thank y'all very much. Got bailed out on that one. Penarol Hazard Mitigation Plan. That is Mr. Willen.
Okay, if you can look in your packet on page eighteen, this came from PAD. This is a proposed resolution which basically adopts the Penarol Regional Hazard Mitigation That is on their website. You can go there and download it. It's about six hundred and fifty pages, but basically, this is required in order for us to receive any FEMA funding, and this is required, I believe, every five years. So it's my recommendation to forward the resolution to council, and certainly read that plan or any parts of it, and let me know if you have any questions before this is actually passed at council.
I'll make a motion. We forward it to council?
Second.
I'll say there is FEMA funding that we're waiting on, but this has to be approved first. So this is.
We gotta do it.
Very important.
All right, we got a motion in a second. Any more discussion?
Is there anything in here about trains? Trains and chemicals and that type stuff? If not, maybe there's something you can, I'm okay with it, but I'd like just you to kinda scan through.
Six hundred and fifty pages. I didn't read all of it.
But you can read about the train.
You've got between now and March seventh. Go through it.
We can answer that question by then.
That'd be good.
It's a timely question.
Thank you.
I know.
Any other discussion on that?
Thirty minutes.
That's right. All right, so we got a motion, a second on the floor. All in favor, send that to council?
Aye.
Any opposed? And Mr. Willen, you're up next on item J. Make it last. I don't see Tab.
Okay, page nineteen. This is a proposed municipal order to go to council declaring these tracts of property as surplus. And as an explanation, we've got one, two, three, four, five, six of these properties are just vacant lots that the city is maintaining. And I'm sure Mike Perry can give you more information on that, but the city's spending a lot of time and resources to mow these lots. They serve no public purpose. Some of these lots we received in drug forfeiture cases, so they're serving no public purpose. The mayor would like to declare these surplus and auction the lots and put that money in the general fund. The last, I think it's either three or four of the lots have lift stations, and they've just been there forever. That actually should be owned by HWEA. So we've communicated with HWEA. They're maintaining those lots anyway, but we would go ahead and do a deed on those lots to HWEA, so they would legally own their own lift stations that they're maintaining. But other than that, this is just a procedure that you have to go through to declare it surplus before you dispose of it. So we would need a motion to refer this municipal order to city council.
Motion to refer.
Second.
Second.
Councilmember Marsh with a motion. Councilmember Martin with a second. Any further discussion?
Steve, Mike, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
He said that not all of them were vacant lots. Is there any structures on any of them?
No, they're all vacant lots.
They're all vacant lots except for the lift stations?
That is correct. Except for the lift stations.
All right. And y'all have, y'all are actually?
We're mowing about every two weeks during the mowing season.
How much roughly does it cost time? I don't wanna put you on the spot.
I couldn't give you, I mean, per lot, you're probably talking about manpower and fuel costs, and you're looking at about forty-five dollars a lot or so each time we mow it.
Okay, thank you.
Well, there's Tab.
Phew. I'm glad you asked.
Lot of money. We'll go to the master commissioner. Is that how you auction them all?
No, this could just be a, just a private auction. A public auction, but a non-judicial public auction.
Okay.
Any further questions?
And just to, there are other ways that we could dispose of it that are required by statute as well. So if another way would be more beneficial to the city and it's allowed by law, then we could go that way, other than an auction.
One other, one other question. If another government, I think I've read it, another government entity would like it, then they can work out, that can be done, too.
That's correct. And HWEA, there's no, that's.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions on the lots? We gotta, we do have a motion, a second. Okay, so, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, now, we're gonna circle back to item H. Thank you, Tab. We moved you to the bottom. You bailed me out, 'cause I lost the coin toss.[1670.33]
Well, no, I appreciate that, I wanna bring good news to you before it even hits the, hits the media. I was at the United Way Celebration Dinner, and you all lead a great community. You can talk about all the things that we wanna argue about, or the things that every community has a problem with, but when you talk about giving, and you've got a community that's got a heart and gives, you're gonna be fine. And the United Way campaign just was announced, $700,000, amazing. Just, yeah, amazing. Great leadership, great community, it starts where the hourly workers are, and they make it work, so it was my pleasure to be there, and so thank you for moving me to the bottom here, Mr. Chairman, and I think, I think the item at hand is asking for the okay to rebrand Tiebreaker Water Park. We've talked about this since the fall, of course, there was some, always wanting to know, well, was the park gonna, everything gonna get done, we're gonna be able to be open, and so we feel very confident about that now, and we think it's the perfect time to rebrand the water park. It's, we have renovations, we have new stuff going on, and it just is the opportunity to do that, we have a timetable set up that would allow us, I think, aggressive, but allow us to move that, we would like to have a contest with the community to rename the water park, and come up with, whoever comes up with the best name, and we would give that winner four-season passes for this upcoming year, and I can tell you, the excitement and energy for the park, water park reopening is there, people are ready for it to be reopened. So, we would love the okay from city council for us to do that, and we would start that process tomorrow, we would have everything wrapped up, because that means we have to have new signage, we have to have new commercials, we have to redo our brochures, and all those things are part and parcel of that, but we think it's a perfect time to have a fresh start for the water park. So, that's what we're looking for, we'd have a contest, and once soon we got the name, then we'd have to have a new logo, and we have a process for that with the company that we work with, it moves very, very quickly on that, so that is the request, and if there are any questions, Mr. Chairman, I'll try to answer them.
Do you have a ballpark figure?
Of?
Of the total cost it would take to do the signage and...
Oh, we've got that wrapped up within the, within the numbers that, we had all that within the numbers that you all already allocated for redoing the park.
Okay. And Terry, just for, you know, those of you that weren't here, we allocated quite a bit of money.
Put this figure up.
We allocated a lot of money to repair, to repair and upgrade, if it was gonna be down, council decided, if it's gonna be down, we're gonna bring it back looking really good, and new signage and those things, I'm gonna tell you, the new signage was kinda like, that's the only way I was gonna get a vote on that one.
The sign is terrible. The sign is terrible.
So, we're gonna replace this stuff anyway, so if we're gonna do it, now's the time to do it.
And on that, on the signage, by the way, complete new sign, same structure, new signage facing on the front, and we're gonna put a video sign on both sides of that, so it'll be very eye-catching, and it will also allow us to promote the water park, but also the events going on at the ballpark there.
Councilman Crabtree.
So, I'm gonna shock everyone, I'm gonna make the motion that TAB move forward, we spend enough money on this water park, go rock and roll and do your thing, so I make the mo... No.
And Chuck, I'll second that.
And I'm gonna go to an administrative matter here, Doug, I don't think we actually need a motion on this, do we? Or do we?
Well, you got one.
Since it's on the floor, I think now these people...
Okay, so it's on the floor to vote on, so all in favor, rebranding the water park?
Aye.
Aye! Thank you so much, council.
And then what will happen now is, we'll see this at council after we get the new name, we'll do an MO then, because what we're doing now is letting him take off and hit these dates.
Hey, Steve, can I ask a quick question while we're still in the water park? So, you mentioned tomorrow, so you already have a plan to kinda roll this out to the public for this contest?
We've got, we've got a timetable right here, and we think...
Okay, so what's the timetable? When is the deadline to submit your ideas, just in case people ask me?
It will be, announce the contest tomorrow, we will select the contest winner by March 13th.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Tab, can you just shoot that timeline to us all in an email?
Sure, absolutely, we'll be happy to. Send it to everybody. And then the game plan is, again, that we will, we will be ready to roll with everything on May 1, and the water park opens on May 27.
Perfect.
Great. Okay, well, there we go.
Good job, TAB.
Thank you very much, Mr. Brockman.
Don't blink, you'll miss it.
So, we are down to others, anybody have any other business to discuss?
I do.
Councilman Crabtree.
So, really, I'm wanting to bring something to the council of the whole next month, and I've talked to the mayor, I've talked to Councilman Keel, but I've worked with Troy and Holly, and we've talked about the Sudden Service Station, and I think there's some lessons learned by going through that, and I know we talked about it maybe being on the next meeting, I'd like to lock that in, and then I'd like to come back and discuss that in council of the whole.
And without the business list right in front of me, I think, Chris, you're, I don't wanna put you on the spot, but we did put that on the march, if I'm not mistaken, because there was some, Mayor Knight, the reason we moved that was Mayor Knight was having some conversations with the LDC, we just wanna be sure when we, when we discuss it, we have everything in front of us, and I know he was waiting, I talked to him about it after we discussed it.
Well, another month should give everybody time to have all the discussions and...
Lot of, lot of changeover, a lot going on, got, got a lot of new folks, so just, you know, just needed an extra month on that. Anybody else got anything on other?
I just wanna thank Mr. Herndon and his crew, we had an issue in civilly subdivision, you know, with speeding and everything, because there's one entrance in, one entrance out, and so they got together quickly to do a engineering study for stop sign in that area to see if it's viable, so I just wanna thank you all for getting on that real quick, because it's a real safety issue.
Anything else? Next up is closed session, so we will need a motion and a second to go into closed session.
The motion needs to specify that we're going in under KRS 61.8101C, pending litigation.
I'll make a motion to go under KRS...
Hahnberger and council. Craig, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Any opposed?
No, that was my one chance, so...
Now we're just gonna entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
I got Mr. Martin and Mr. Craig all in favor.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Bridge iron.